This is BBC Radio Northampton.
Unless the government takes a serious look at its funding of local public services, we will struggle to even deliver statutory services by as soon as 2019, 2020. That was councillor Robin Brown, county council cabinet member for finance, in an unusual piece today announcing £24.7 million of additional cuts from Northamptonshire County Council, in addition to the £9.6 million we already knew about, making a total of £34.3 million for the next financial year. So what's gone wrong, if anything has? Is it simply the government's fault because they're not funding councils properly? Could Northamptonshire County Council have done things differently in the past? And what's the impact of all of these cuts? We're at the Parkin Hotel in Northampton with an invited audience, people interested in various aspects of all of this because they represent campaign groups who are concerned about the cuts, or from other walks of life, stakeholders all, and the county council is represented as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for being with us. Let me start by going to the leader of Northamptonshire County Council, councillor Heather Smith, who is with us here. You have said before, Heather, that this council's on a cliff edge. We've had councillor Brown, as I mentioned earlier, saying today that unless the government looks at how it funds local council services, you're going to struggle to even deliver those services, the statutory services you're required to by law within 12 months or two years. This is a pretty serious situation that you're now in charge of.
It isn't the easiest situation that I would have chosen to have found myself in, but we are where we are, and we have to do our utmost to make sure that the statutory services that is protecting the most vulnerable within Northamptonshire is given the priority that it has to have. There's been an absolutely unprecedented increase in not only costs but demands for the services, and it's beyond anything that anybody could ever have anticipated. The numbers of children in care have increased by 20% over the last three years, and every time I ask our lead member for children's services, what's the children in care figure now, it always seems to continue to keep going up. It doesn't turn down, and the costs of looking after some of those children, and some of them have the most profound disability, or possibly they've been living in incredibly difficult home circumstances that have damaged them emotionally, mentally, and the costs of looking after those children has absolutely escalated.
Why is the number of children in care increased?
Well, it isn't just Northamptonshire. It always feels as though it's just Northamptonshire, but it isn't. It's actually the whole national position is that there are more and more children having to come into care. And as you know, it's one of the things I've talked about before, in Northamptonshire we also have unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. We're still the fourth highest in the country. It's over 10% of the children in care are unaccompanied children who get off the back of lorries, and it's very unpredictable what's going to happen from one week to the next.
Just take us through councillor Robin Brown, who is here as well, if you would. Cabinet member responsible for finance, just take us through what those statutory services are that you have to provide.
The children's social services, the adult social services are the two main expenditure areas within the county council. The adult social services includes the disability service, which means that we're talking about people who from the age of 14 through to 25, at one time who transferred into the adults, are now being cared for in the children's services at a much higher cost than they were three years ago. But the real increase, and the big problem that's hitting us now, is the massive increase that's come about by the demands from adult social care, and in particular the care of the elderly. And if you think about what's happened with the number of people being required to be given care, who have been holding up beds, the delayed transfers of care in the hospitals, that increase is at more than 25% over the last three years, and far greater than we ever planned or would have expected.
The government has said a couple of, three years ago, perhaps maybe even five years ago, that you could actually have a precept to deal with that, hasn't it? They've said you can actually charge additionally to your council tax increase to cover that cost.
For the last three years, this is the final year in the period of this extra charge, it's 3% that we're adding this year, but remember, that 3% is on our base council tax. Our council tax has been for a long time now, one of the lowest in the counties in the country. That fact is therefore that that 3% doesn't raise the same as it would do in other counties, and in consequence is not really necessarily the best way to raise funds for adult social care. The problem with adult social care is it's a national issue that requires the central government now to take a different view about how that is being funded. In the last chancellor's statement a few weeks ago, we had to agree that if you don't put money into that area, it's only going to create even greater problems for the county council, because that money has to be spent in that area. We need to provide the most vulnerable with that care, but to do that, we've got to find and have the funding for it. And that's one of the reasons why the discretionary services we've been proud to deliver are now being squeezed and cut in a way that we would never, ever have wanted to do.
Right, I don't want to dwell too much on history because we've got the here and now to deal with, but just let me go back to councillor Smith on something Robin Brown just said about historically, Northamptonshire County Council being so proud of this tag of not having this big council tax increase. Do you regret that?
Hindsight's a wonderful thing. I think I can honestly say now that we do recognise that if we had been able to, and let's be clear, we haven't been able to for the last few years, if we'd been able to increase council tax more than the level that we have been increasing it, then we would have done. But we have been capped, we're still capped, all councils can't increase more than 2% and the-
2%, plus the precept for adult social-
Plus the social care precept, but it's still 2%. And prior to that, between 2010 and 2015, under the Conservative Lib Dem government, we were strongly encouraged not to increase council tax at all, and for three of those five years, we didn't. For two of those years, we ignored that, and really well and truly ended up on the naughty step because we weren't accepting the direction from the government at that time. But with hindsight, we should have ignored it all the way through. In fact, some councils did.
So is the coalition government to blame, Lib Dems, Vince Cable, it's all his fault, is it?
I wouldn't point the finger at anybody, let's-
Oh, go on, Heather, point a finger.
Well, you know, let's be honest about this. At the time, in 2010, the public were being asked to accept no pay rises. So it seemed perfectly reasonable at the time for the government to say to us, don't increase council tax, but what wasn't taken into account were all the additional pressures that were going to come in.
Okay. Chris Danbury from the Liberal Democrats, since you've been mentioned, you were part of, or party was part of the coalition government. Were they right to maintain council taxes at such a low level?
Northamptonshire County Council were not right, no. Let's be clear, the zero council tax increases were driven by the Conservative team and ministers at the Department of Communities and Local Government, led by Eric Pickles, who was convinced that county councils across the country had billions in reserves that they could just throw around. As we've heard, Northamptonshire County Council weren't one of those, and as a result, you know, the graphs that we were all shown showing a huge funding gap that was going to increase with adult social care in particular, were very stark, and a different course should undoubtedly have been taken by the county council.
And what would the Liberal Democrats have done differently if you'd been in charge of the county council and not just sharing power with those evil Conservatives?
Well, we wouldn't be where we are now, that's for sure, and we would have adopted a different approach. We would have been given the same amount of financial information that the Conservatives running the county council were being given at the time, and undoubtedly different decisions would have been taken.
Okay, that's the Liberal Democrat perspective locally. As I said, I don't spend too much time on the history, but we will come in political fairness to the Labour Party. Bob Scott, cheers, leads the Labour group on the county council, Bob.
Yes, thank you, yeah. I do want to talk about what happened in the past, because I think it is important, and it really concentrates minds on the future. But in my estimation, the ask up until 2021 is half a billion. If you look at the makeup of that, something like two-sevenths that we require was in fact wasted by this authority. £200 million was wasted because we had the issue of the decisions that cost us £80 million, plus we had things like the Carillion contract. I know it's going back a long way, but if we'd have had that money, we would have paid for the next two years quite easily. So I estimate there's something like 71% of the position we've gotten, the savings we've got to make is down to government, and about 29% down to this local authority.
Given that, that's the history, as you say, if you were in Heather Smith's position right now, you'd be facing the same set of issues right now. What would you do differently today?
I think it's an almost impossible task, because it's very clear from the paperwork we receive today, we'll get through this 1819, but we're not going to get through the next year. And this authority has been relying on government stepping in, and I think they've been very clear, they're not going to step in. What they apply will have to apply to every other local authority. The only help we've been offered, and I think part of it's been taken up, was by the LGA, where they did offer to help, but that's too little, too late. We were offering a lot of the solutions that are in the paperwork today, and should have been in five, six years ago, that would have helped to some extent, perhaps not fully.
Well, thank you. And just to fully paint the picture that we're dealing with, also with us is the Police and Crime Commissioner Stephen Mould, and you said on my breakfast show on BBC Radio Northampton before that you're not far away from going to the public and asking for a referendum, which you'd have to, to increase the amount of money you need.
Absolutely, Stuart. Yeah, and I've talked about the different levels in funding. The challenge that the county has generally, not just county, also policing, is we don't get a good enough deal from central government. You know, I often talked on your radio show about kind of Durham, they get £137 per resident, and we get £102. Doesn't sound like a lot, but actually that's £12 million extra that they get in Durham that we don't get here, and actually they have 100,000 less residents. So there also is a conversation about where actually our money's coming from. But absolutely, unless we get kind of the power to increase the precept at a higher level, and funny enough, I was just recently in Wales, where actually the PCCs down there are not capped at 2%. So last year, they raised it by 6.3%. So either we've got to have a better central government funding, or a mixture of all of those, or as you say, we'll be having a referendum here in Northamptonshire.
And before we move on to the specific issues of the cuts that have been announced, the nearly £10 million that people know affecting libraries, bus subsidies, which we'll do in a second. Heather Smith, is government just not listening to you?
I have had a number of meetings in London, and I am writing on a weekly basis at the moment, saying to government, this is the situation we're in. They do know in detail what our financial situation is, and we wait to find out whether we've been listened to or not.
I mean, they're obviously preoccupied by Brexit, is that getting in the way?
What has happened within government is a number of staff have been taken out of various government departments and moved over to the Brexit team, so you've got a lot of new people coming in into some of the other government departments who perhaps haven't got the experience, and we would normally have had the government settlement by now, and we would know whether our calls for additional support were being answered or not. At one point, we thought we were pretty clear we were going to hear tomorrow, but then I've heard later on today it might not be until the New Year.
Who in government are you talking to? I mean, presumably you're not picking the phone up and saying hello to Theresa, give us a few, Bob.
Sajid Javid, who is the secretary of state for local government-
You're talking directly to him, are you?
Yes, and I'm writing directly to him, and I've been down with our new chief executive, and we were very plain and blunt about exactly where we are.
And do they get it, do they understand?
Well, I did say I nearly put the keys to the buildings in my pocket when I went down, so I don't think I could have been clearer than that. And we have made it absolutely clear that, as has already been said, we will be able to set a balanced budget for 1819, but for the following year, unless something changes significantly, then we won't be able to set a balanced budget. But I want to say, it's not only Northamptonshire, there are a number of other authorities who are also writing in and also making pleas, who are all saying that when it gets to 1920, unless the funding method changes, then everybody will be in trouble.
Amongst the things already announced initially is the situation regarding our libraries. Paula Holmes is here from Desborough Library. Library is your passion.
It's one of my passions, my town is my passion.
And what are you concerned about with what's proposed for libraries? There were three or four options on the table, weren't there?
Yes, but we can't survive, we're not one of the retained libraries unless we want to become a community-run library. Can I just say, Desborough has an incredibly high precept, and yet we're stuck out at the edge of county, we don't have police, and now we don't want a library. We actually are wondering in the town, what are we paying our council tax and our precept for?
So it's a lawless town and nobody can read, really, is what you're telling me?
Actually, if you saw the children who did the heart protest, you would understand how articulate those kids are, and they do use the library, it is no joke. Each of the three schools uses the library on a regular basis, and there are lots of good ideas that we can do for that library, and we think we should be kept, so, along with every other library, of course, but we would have to pay to go into Kettering. That's fine, but the people who would be hit the hardest are the people who haven't got the money to go into Kettering. We also serve the villages, we could support Corby, because Corby only has Corby Library allocated as one that's being retained. Between 2001 and 2011, Desborough's population grew by 34.2%. We've taken houses galore, we've grumbled, but we've taken them and we've survived, and we think it is about time that county and Kettering realise we did exist. We put a lot into this economy and we'd like a little bit back.
And Robin Brown, just picking up on that point about the population increase, that's one of the main issues that you're trying to grapple with.
It is indeed, and in fact, that growth has not been recognised by central government. Remember, the money comes in arrears, it doesn't come into the front, and effectively, our figures are based upon 2012, so here we are in 2017, not recognising the growth that's been going on throughout the county. I think one of the issues about funding, however, let's be quite clear, back in 2015, the central government recognised there was going to be a problem, they then gave us the opportunity of having a four-year planned budget. At the same time, they changed the rules concerning capital disposals, which meant that we were able to use that money to fund the changing services that we would need to transform. But also, at that time, they promised that there would be a fairer funding settlement completed for 2018. That has not been achieved, and in fact, it's one of the reasons why Heather started the campaign earlier this year about having fairer funding, because essentially, that was the key to continuing to be able to have a growth county, providing jobs, providing increases in the economy, and at the same time, providing the services for the most vulnerable in our county.
Trish Saville, I think, is here as well. Trish Saville is from Brackley Library, and you've obviously got your concerns as well.
Certainly have. I have been under the guise of volunteer for the past 10 years, and have been manager of that library. We too, like Desborough, are on the outskirts of our county, right at the very gateway of it, and you were mentioning about protecting the most vulnerable people in your community. Well, I think cutting the libraries was certainly an effect, the most vulnerable people in our community, and would have therefore a knock-on effect on therefore your expenditure for that area. So just don't shut them, just don't shut your middle ones. I mean, I can understand you needed to cut some of them, but at least the middle-sized libraries could help the smaller libraries in the area. For instance, we can mop up Middleton Chiney, but travelling to Toaster, which is a half-hour journey, nine pound, if you're a mum with a couple of small children, you are not going to do that.
Is your library well-used?
It is well-used, yeah, we do it for all sorts of things, used from under-fives and under-services for that, we run community cinemas, lots of groups, U3A use our library, it is a well-used library, and not just for taking books out, which is one of the criteria you've been looking at, and I don't think that's the main one you should consider.
Donna Scott is here somewhere, I think, is Donna? Donna is the bard of Northampton, library closure campaigner. What do you make of the libraries under threat as they are?
Well, I think it's a terrible situation. I've got every sympathy with the council trying to manage their budget, but looking at libraries as the solution, I think it's a sticking plaster, and you know, they don't last very long. As a cost, libraries are cheap, but they bring so much additional value, it kind of doesn't make sense to look at that as an area of initial cost-cutting. I mean, when we have spoken to people who are not library users, they do tend to think of it as just something that people do to borrow books, but it's clearly not that. I mean, I was in the library last weekend, and there were children coming in who don't have access to the computers at home, so are using the computers in the library. It's a valuable resource, job seeker support, mental health resources, children's services. I mean, we're representing, myself and Rachel here, we're representing Kingsthorpe Library, and it's not a designated children's centre, but it is where a lot of mothers come to meet their health visitor, and without the library, where will they go?
Rachel, tell us about Kingsthorpe Library.
Yeah, well, I use Kingsthorpe Library on a weekly basis at the moment, but I've been a member of the Kingsthorpe Library for over 30 years. I've recently had my daughter, and if I hadn't have had the library, I would be so isolated from my community. I've met so many mums. It's a place where I can meet people, can understand the same situation that I'm in, and I've made friends from it. Being a mother is such an isolating situation, I think people think it's, you know, it is a life-changing, wonderful experience, but it's so isolating as well. And we're saying about the most vulnerable of our society, new mothers, children, you know, if we don't invest in them, what are we saying to them? You know, Kingsthorpe has, within its catchment area, some people who are in, I think, the 10% most deprived people in the whole country. You know, if we can't keep Kingsthorpe Library open, I think it's a really poor state.
Do you understand the problems, the issues the council's facing?
I do, but the fairer funding thing has been going on for a long while, we've been poorly funded for a long time, but we're only shouting now, now that the problem's really at the doorstep. We should have been shouting years ago. And for me, as a voter, I feel like, and I might be alone, but I feel like, you know, this problem was way before the elections, but it wasn't announced. Nobody said in May, vote us in and our libraries will be cut, and I feel like we've been cheated a little bit for that, it feels a little bit underhand.
Did you cheat them, Heather Smith?
Let me just say that as far as the library service is concerned, that a few years ago, we looked at the library service then, there were discussions then about some of the libraries closing, and the library service was transformed, and a lot of money was taken out, and it was found to be, and we felt it was, one of the lowest-cost services in the country. We brought in a lot of volunteers, and we all felt quite comfortable that we'd gone as far as we needed to go. And when it comes to libraries, my reaction and the reaction of a number of my colleagues was, the amount of money that we'll save by doing this is too small, and we knew how everybody would react, that it would be the absolute last resort. But I've become very conscious that throughout the country, 20 out of 27 county councils have already gone down this route, and throughout the country, there are some incredibly successful community libraries. Now, I know that is terribly difficult for Kingsthorpe, but it wouldn't be terribly difficult for Brackley. And this might be a good point to sort of turn and look at Danny, who, you know, works with all the parish and town councils throughout the county, because a number of parishes and towns, and again, I know it doesn't apply to Kingsthorpe, are indicating that they are willing to look at turning into a community library. Now, the ideal situation for me would be to have some transitional funding from government to give us more time to sort this out properly, rather than just getting to the 1st of April and libraries having to close.
But if they won't give you the fairer funding you're looking for, are they really going to give you transitional funding?
There is a possibility that they might, but I can't predict what government are going to do at the moment. But, you know, this is something that we've said to government, these are a lot of local services that we want to do some work on to try and enable them to become community-run libraries, but we need more time.
Okay, you talk about Danny, Danny Moody, from the Northamptonshire County Association of Local Councils. Is it a feasible proposition that a parish council could take on a library and run it in the way that Heather Smith suggests?
Possibly, but there lies the problem, doesn't it? Because the devil is in the detail, and what we need urgently is a lot more detail. We've heard already this evening that people talk about libraries, but of course, you know, one size doesn't fit all. A library means different things to different people, different things happen in libraries. So are we talking about a building in which books are stored to be lent out to people, or are we talking about buildings in which other things happen, like access to children's services, where young mothers can go, et cetera, et cetera? And they really are two very, very different things. You know, if we're talking about all those other things, they could be provided in a building that is not currently a library. I mean, Robin Smith made-
Robin Brown.
Robin Brown, sorry.
Lots of Smiths in the room, actually, but Robin Brown.
Made a bit of a Freudian slip when he said they've appealed for fairer funding rather than fairer funding, because that is the situation. Government has said that there is no more cake, so if Northamptonshire County Council asks for a bigger slice, it means some other county council in the country is going to get a smaller slice, and that's why it's being so unpopular. We've already had the lady from Brackley saying that Brackley Library should stay open, and it could mop up Middleton Chiney Library, was the phrase that was used. Well, the chap from Middleton Chiney is here, and he would not like Middleton Chiney Library mopped up by Brackley. So there's a real urgent need to get into the nitty-gritty of this.
We'll come to Middleton Chiney in a second, over the other side of the room, but just in front of me right now is Stuart from Brackley. Can you reassure Middleton Chiney this is not a takeover bid?
I'd like to, yes. I mean, I'd probably disagree slightly with Trish, actually, I don't think any of the libraries, including the smaller libraries, should be closed because they're also important. I'd just like to say about the town council taking on funding, why should we pay twice for the library service? Why should we pay Brackley Council for the library service and pay the county council for the library service? That's not fair at all.
Gil Holmes from Desbury, you were nodding in agreement with that, weren't you?
Yeah, why should we be paying twice for a service in these small rural towns? That if I live in Kettering, I only pay Kettering council tax, I don't pay the extra precepted taxes in Desborough, but if I live in Desborough, I don't get those same services.
Danny Moody, there lies some of the problems you're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely, and we could spend this entire hour, couldn't we, talking about local government finance and double taxation and so on and so forth. The reality is, it's so complex, there's beyond probably anybody in this room to fully comprehend.
Where's Mr Middleton Chiney gone? There we are, Richard Solbury-Tim.
Yeah, the problem with Middleton is you've got three aspects. You've got the car park, which you're looking at, which is used by Middleton Primary School, and you've also got the preschool, which is at least half the building. So what happens to them when you're looking at, I think by the 22nd of December, you're actually going around assessing and actually evaluating the whole site. So for us, it's getting quite complicated, plus the fact that we serve King Sutton, which to get to Brackley from King Sutton is an absolute nightmare.
Okay, we've heard children's centres mentioned in the context of this discussion about libraries. Angela Progge and Tracey Gallagher, I think, are with us. Tracey, sitting over here, tell me about the issues you're facing then now.
I think our concern with the proposal for the 40% cuts for the children's centres, and it relates very much to Heather's point, that the number of children being looked after is unprecedented numbers, it's increasing dramatically, but yet to cut early intervention services would have such a dramatic impact on families. And by stopping us being able to deliver those services very early on, the longer-term issue would be the numbers would actually increase. If we can get in and work with those families early, it prevents the problems from escalating and becoming much more serious, children becoming children with child protection plans, and then becoming looked-after children. And so we're putting a sticking plaster on. It's very, very short-sighted to actually think cutting those services at the early intervention level will actually save money, because longer term, it will actually cost the authority more.
What would it mean to a family that uses the centre to have those cuts imposed?
It would just be so dramatic. With the proposal of the 40% cuts, we've had to look at planning for what that would mean, and the reduction in services for families, it would just be devastating for families. Families, the most vulnerable families, families most at risk of social exclusion will just be pushed further and further away.
Sandra Mould, sitting alongside you, you were nodding your head at a lot of all of this.
Yes, definitely, and I think, you know, time and time again, it's been proven that children don't thrive within the care system, so both morally and economically, the case for early intervention, community-based, universal services to support families, to prevent them going into a care system, is a far better option for this county council and for the country.
We're also hearing about cuts to bus subsidies, and Heather Smith, that's a major issue for people living in the rural parts of the county, isn't it?
Well, it certainly is. The area that I represent, which is in the north-northeast of the county, I represent over 20 villages, and they are all served by an on-demand service that is subsidised, and you know, I would hate to lose that as much as every resident who uses those services in that part of the county. But some of the parish councils have already approached me for information about the costs of the subsidy, and then the number of passengers that will use those services, and if enough of them get together, we might be able to keep some of the services, or we might be able to find another solution for a parish if they're prepared to put the money in. And this sort of goes back to people saying, I'm paying twice. I think we need to make it absolutely clear that what you're paying to the county council is paying now for social care, and that's what people don't really understand, that that is where your council tax money is going.
So for statutory services that you have to provide, and that's what people are putting their hands in the pocket for?
That's what they're paying for, it isn't for-
There's no money for anything else?
No.
Hands are going up around the room. Hands are going up around the room now. Let's come and see who we're, gentlemen, we're talking to. There's got his name badge turned the wrong way around. Of course, it is councillor Dennis Merrilith, indeed, apologies, Dennis.
Of the Lib Dems. I'm on the bus subsidies working group, and we've recently made a recommendation to the county council. And I think it's important that we say this, that we put a recommendation, which was passed unanimously, that the bus subsidies would not be implemented for a year. That will be going to Cabinet for their decision, so we will be waiting for that with interest.
And the Cabinet is likely to endorse your proposal, isn't it, Heather?
Well, I don't know whether he's actually saying that Northampton Borough Council is going to put money in to the bus subsidies. Is that what you're saying?
No, we're not saying that. We put in a recommendation from the county council's working group from bus subsidies, and it was your own man who was the chairman, Alan Walker, that put that recommendation to you. And we supported it as a cross-group.
Well, we're in a consultation period with a draft budget, so, you know, I can't say what the outcome of that's going to be.
And just to remind us, the consultation period for the first £10 million nearly, that's more or less over now?
Well, libraries is not until the middle of January.
Right, okay.
That goes until the middle of January.
But consultation on the cuts that have been announced this week, that starts now, does it?
Well, it starts after the cabinet meeting tomorrow and-
Which will be this morning by the time this programme's broadcast.
Yeah. Yes, it will be. The full budget meeting isn't until later in February.
We're discussing the Northamptonshire County Council cuts on BBC Radio Northampton this evening. £25 million nearly of additional cuts, in addition to the £10 million already announced, have been announced this week. Lots of people called Smith in the room. We just heard from councillor Heather Smith, the leader of the county council. Penny Smith represents unison within the county council. How concerned are you for your members?
Very concerned for our members. Our members are completely demoralised within the county council. They're working for an authority that doesn't seem to care.
It's given you a bright, shiny new offices.
I'm afraid you take me by surprise with that one. I mean, the outside of the office is lovely, but the working conditions aren't always so grand. I mean-
So you're telling me it's not such a nice palace, Angel Square, as it looks?
No. It was sold to us as unions, part of the reason people, shiny office, we would provide them tea and coffee. Well, that's lasted four months. So they were told not to bring in personal possessions, not to bring in their own mugs, weren't given places to store tea and coffee, and now they've got to do it. But this is on top of, I mean, that sounds small, but when it's on top of everything and these things build up, people don't know where they're going to sit in the morning. I've gone into work in Angel and I've watched people try and find a desk to sit at, or they're sat so far away from their team. It makes working cohesively really difficult. I've seen people spend 20 minutes trying to get their computer working, the phone on their desk working for them. That's 20 minutes of lost time at the start of the day. People were told it's hot desking. So we're now finding that some people, the first person in a team in, is saving the whole row of desks. So it's just-
And that's across all departments?
Across all departments.
Councillor Robin Brown, how many jobs are you losing in these cuts?
The ones that have just been announced today could affect up to 50 full-time equivalent staff.
And on top of that, you've also got the frustrations you've just heard about.
I agree. And I think that one of the issues about the future is being able to demonstrate, one, that we have funding in place to ensure that the services are delivered; two, that we have a reward programme for the staff, which is one that they can believe in and can feel that they are being rewarded properly. And certainly, I think it's very important that we do look more carefully at the way that those people are working and the conditions that they're working under. And I think that it's important to recognise that up to now, everybody involved has done a fantastic job.
Councillor Matt Goldby, sitting alongside you. You can't be happy to hear what's being said about the staff morale.
Yeah, of course. The staff are the biggest asset for the county council. We've got some amazing staff. I get to work with many of them from the director level, all the way down to some of the frontline social workers, for example, because that's the area of my responsibilities, children's services. Yeah, we've got some great staff. And I know there've been lots of workshops to make sure staff are being listened to and changes are being made to take on board the comments that Penny made there, that, you know, teams are located together and they work as efficiently and effectively as possible.
I'm going to come to Ken Ritchie in a second, because Ken Ritchie can give us an informed opinion about how local government might work and how it does work now. But Stephen Mould, you had your hand up just a moment ago, Police and Crime Commissioner.
Yeah, I just, yeah, my job is to protect the most vulnerable in the county in conjunction with the counties, the district. And I actually think there's a kind of an elephant in the room that I don't think we're all kind of talking about. You know, the good people of Northamptonshire Government give a certain amount of money to us, and are we making the best use of that value? I mean, at the moment, here in Northamptonshire, we've got district councils, and we've got kind of county councils. I'd want to make sure that we get all of those people in a room and start to work how we can use those resources better.
Ken Ritchie, as I say, is former chief executive of the Electoral Reform Society, so has a perspective looking maybe at the wider context of all of this. Also happens to be, I should say, a Liberal Democrat councillor in Daventry. But when we're hearing, Ken, about this apparent failure of central government to connect with local government, we should be worried about that, shouldn't we?
Yes, but let me just be clear on one thing. Yes, let me talk about local democracy. I am a local councillor, but it's a Labour one. I'm not here, I'm not here being critical simply of a Conservative administration, because there are administrations around the country, all of whom are facing the same problems. Some are doing better than others. But I feel that what we have is not simply a financial crisis, it is a crisis of local politics. It is a failure of local politics. We're only having this meeting here. Councillor Smith talks about being on the cliff edge. Why are we only having this discussion when on the cliff edge? We're tinkering around the edges. We're talking about, you know, do we have cuts in libraries? Do we have cuts in bus subsidies? Is it going to be children's centres where these cuts are going to be? The reality, from what we hear, is that they will all need to be cut, and they'll probably need to be cut a lot further than is being proposed at the moment. We had election leaflets and people telling us that everything was rosy. There was no mention. These problems have been seen, not just for the two years ago that councillor Smith has mentioned, they've been coming for a long time.
Are we, the voters, to blame to some extent? Because we all know, when it comes to local elections, nobody's interested, are they?
If you're a politician, it's always rather dangerous to blame the voter. But I think that, yes, that we need a wake-up call, but councillors are there as our representatives. How can they represent us if they do not have regular communication with us? We should have been having these discussions when there were still realistic choices to be made. Instead, the only good thing that I have heard this evening is that our Police and Crime Commissioner is considering the idea of a referendum. I think I can't see any financial solution that looks at all attractive at the moment. Why did we not have the courage to follow Kent County Council way back months ago in saying, "Look, we are going for a 15% rise"? We might not have wanted a referendum, but on the other hand, it would have had a wide debate. It would have got people involved, looking at what the real options are. Are we prepared to pay for the services that we need?
Heather Smith? If we went for a referendum, which is something that we have discussed, we know that the costs of a referendum in Northamptonshire would be a million pounds. Now, there was a referendum in Bedfordshire by the Police and Crime Commissioner there, probably four or five years ago, I can't remember the exact date. And he was then criticised because he went to a referendum and the public said no. So that cost a few hundred thousand pounds, I'm not sure exactly what it was.
And the referendum has to be paid for by the local authority itself?
It certainly does. Now, whether government would exceptionally allow us to be released from the cap for a year, we don't know. But it's certainly something that I've put to government ministers.
And that's what they'd have to do, to release the funds for the referendum?
Well, we know that under the Local Government Act, the Secretary of State could make an exception. And we know that from attending a number of the consultation events that we've been to, a number of people have said, "We would accept an increase in council tax." But if we go out to a referendum and we include everybody in Northamptonshire and they go into the polling booth there and they're asked, "Would you increase your council tax, yes or no?", then the chances are, they would probably say, "No, we don't want to pay extra tax."
Lots of hands going up around the room. Danny Moody, is the prospect of a referendum, I mean, you're talking from the perspective of the parish councils, I understand, but is the prospect of a referendum to solve all of this, is that one that you would look forward to?
I think the recent history shows that referendums are a bit risky, aren't they? So it's not something I've heard a lot of people ask for. I think Heather is right with the risk of doing that. You know, you could spend an awful lot of money.
Okay. Bob Scott from the Labour Party of the County Council?
Yeah, well, we've seen referendums can be quite divisive. But on the other hand, we're in a situation where you've got to have some way of getting extra money at the moment. There doesn't seem to be any other way. And we've got the position where two different parties could look at a referendum and share the cost.
And you're talking about?
I'm talking about the county council and the police authority.
Okay. Stephen Mould?
Yeah, look, as I said, I'm considering a referendum. It's not a choice I really want or hope that we don't make. And we hope we apply enough pressure on behalf of government to actually come to the table to make sure that they do it. But I think actually, in the end, you know, the public have a choice to say, "Look, what kind of service they do and don't want and how much they're prepared to pay for it."
Okay. We have a gentleman from Save Northamptonshire Services over here who wants to have a say. Paul Crofts?
Could I just first of all say that the speaker from Daventry, the councillor, hit a kind of nail on the head. I think we're facing a systemic national and local crisis. This is not a crisis which can be solved by the government listening more, or parishes and councils getting together, or a referendum. There's a systemic council failure here and national government failure, and it's based on ideology. It's an ideology which has been sold to the public through austerity. It's been sold to the public over many years that low taxation is good. It's a systemic crisis relating to our attitudes to people in need, our attitudes to people like the elderly, children. And it's not just a question of listening more. People like the local councillors here know the effect of their cuts on libraries, on children's centres. They know how it's going to hurt people. But they're quite happy to go along with that because it fits in with a wider ideology.
What's the alternative to what they're doing?
Alternative is firstly, we need to talk about political and economic strategies, both locally and nationally. And Conservative Tory policies of austerity have failed. If the local Conservative administration had any courage, they would resign. "Don't have a referendum. Let's go for another election."
Councillor Heather Smith, are you following the austerity agenda and should you now resign?
Well, let's go back to the austerity agenda. When the Conservatives and Lib Dems took over in 2010, the country was virtually bankrupt. We had no money. Now, we can, well-
People are saying it was a myth and that wasn't true.
Well, okay. So the guy who left a note to say, "Sorry, there's no money", was not telling the truth, was he? So I think we'll have to agree to disagree on that point. And I do not accept in any way at all that it's ideology that's been leading us in the county council. We had no intention whatsoever at that point in time of even looking at, for example, libraries because we always knew it wasn't a huge amount of money going in there. But the situation has got worse over the last six months.
You've had to come to that virtually six months later. So is that a failure of your planning?
Absolutely.
No, it's actually demands within the system.
Penny Smith from Unison, you want to say something?
Yes, I do want to say something about, it's about the childcare and the services. The lady at the back touched on it before, in the fact that you haven't invested enough into child early intervention. I know of a recent graduate of the county council, been in the job six weeks, found outside One Angel Square crying because she can't continue her role anymore because of the overwork that she is facing. And if you don't help children and troubled families at the early stage, then they go into care, then you're faced with this big bill. You need to provide more help at the early stage. You need to train staff, have enough staff, not agency staff, your own staff who are well-trained, but you can't feel valued when you work for an authority that's going to take a day's pay off you at a drop of a hat.
It's been councillor Matt Goldby in here now.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point about the lady's made at the back there from Corby and the point made about early help and prevention. And I completely agree about that. It's obvious, really, if you're not investing in that and not helping families in the early years when they most need it, they're going to come back into the system at a much higher level and a much higher cost. And it's, you know, it's not going to help them and it's not going to help the likes of the county council that have to provide those services. But I'm, as the lead member for children's services, I've been appointed to the Local Government Association Children's Board. And this whole point is a national conversation that's happening. And it seems madness in a way that authorities like ours are being asked to provide these high-level statutory services. But to afford to do that, we're having to unpick and take out things like early help and prevention, which is completely counterproductive. So I just wanted to make the point that we're not doing this because we want to. There's no ideology behind it. It's the fact of how we meet our statutory demands.
I'll come to Rachel McNair from Kingsop again in a second, but councillor Mick Scrimshaw from the Labour Group wants to say something.
Thank you, yes, I do. A lot of the discussion tonight has been around the role of government in the funding for the county council. But clearly, there have been missed opportunities by this council over a number of years. I'm actually quite thankful that some of the things coming through in this year's budget and that we're going to see tomorrow are things that we've been, as the Labour opposition, have been suggesting for some time. But it's too little, too late. For years and years and years, this authority has sort of collectively buried its head in its sand, suggesting there wasn't any problem, even though when people outside were saying there was. I think that was a point raised in the recent Local Government Association review, where they spoke of criticism being unwelcomed. The problem is, we genuinely are too far down the line now. We are on that cliff edge. Now, the question is, what influence will this council have with central government? The discussion about the libraries earlier, we know that the deputy leader of the council has already said in answer to the fair funding campaign they've got going, that government have said, "Well, why should we help you? You've still got your libraries." So that's probably why the libraries are being pushed at a relatively small cost in the overall budget. But where are we going to be this time next year? If we pretend that we're going to get through this budget, pretend that this budget is going to be deliverable, we're going to miss the trick because next year, there will be nowhere to go.
Mick Scrimshaw, thank you. Chris Dambro from Liberal Democrats.
Thanks, Stuart. I wanted to pick up on Stephen Mould's point about where do we go from here? What's the future of local government in Northamptonshire? Undoubtedly, a change is needed. You know, we've heard from Penny about rock-bottom morale of staff. We have had no money from the government and I doubt that there will be much coming. We're hearing that in a year's time, the county council won't be able to deliver a balanced budget. People do need to sit down to get together and work out what the future structure of local government is going to be in Northamptonshire. Passionately, I am not in favour of a single unitary authority. There is no support of it, for it amongst the people in the county. It's too far away, too remote from local people.
You say there's no support from Chris. The one thing that I get from people that phone and text my show every time this sort of issue is raised is, "Why do we have so many councils, so many councillors? Just give us one."
I think we need more than one. My preference is for three, but I'm not wedded to that. We need to talk about it. Unitary authorities are probably what's going to happen. The government will impose it if the county council can't deliver its budget. But we need something that the people will support.
Okay. Lots of people want to get in before the end of the programme, so let's see if we can get as many in as we can. Rachel McNair?
I just want to say, obviously, if we cut children's services, the cost doesn't go away. It just adds on to midwives and health instances that are going to be in the community. So what it just seems like is the county council are taking that cost out of theirs and putting it to the NHS's budget. And obviously, they're already, you know, facing a very difficult situation as well. So it seems the cost doesn't go away just by cutting it. It's still going to be somewhere else. So the council need to look at other ways, just not putting it to somebody else, I think.
Just not move it around to make it somebody else's responsibility. Paula Holmes?
The £290,000 that you would save this year, well, the coming year, if you take the easiest option on the libraries, you keep saying it's not a lot of money. You're not thinking, and everyone's talked about children's services, and I totally agree, but you have the other end. They are the elderly. They would suffer greatly if those hubs were taken away from them and their mental wellbeing would suffer. Now, what cost would that have on the adult social care? You may have people who are independent now, but in a year's time, won't be, because you've taken away something that's very important to them. The other point is, please don't say that everyone has to pay for something. There are people outside of Northampton that pay for extra things and we're not actually getting those services. So it's not quite as easy-
You mean it to the other local authorities?
Yeah. Well, no, you know, I live in a town with a very high precept. I don't want to lose my library. But then again, I don't think I've got the right to say the town's got to pay actually even more than Kettering or Corby, et cetera. So it's not as easy as to say you've got to pay for the services. We pay for the services, which we're not going to get. But don't forget the elderly, they are a big thing in this as well.
Okay. We mustn't forget the state of our roads either. John Norrie is with us from Northamptonshire Advanced. John Norrie is with us from Northamptonshire Advanced Motorists. Are you concerned about the impact of the cuts on the local highways?
Well, I think the problem is the dividing line between national situation and local situation. I think that's a problem. And also, I think renewing white lines is small beer compared with ignoring kids and their problem, et cetera. So you're not going to get a lot of sympathy there. I think there are issues with things like visibility, where you don't cut hedges on junctions. That can be quite dangerous. And there are a lot of examples I've seen, because I spend a lot of time driving around the county in the passenger seat of other people's cars. And the roads in our county are embarrassing, they're a disgrace. But, I mean, I don't think you can put that at the door of the county council.
Because those are the national highways authority.
The highways authority and then the local authority. And to me, the dividing line is never quite clear.
And the poor old motorist has to pay all the time, doesn't he?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There's no reduction there. But, you know, you're whistling in the wind, I think, on that one.
Shashya Dalakia, sitting next to you from Trading Standards, that's also a key worry for a lot of people, that Trading Standards could be really badly affected by this.
Very much so. I think over the years, the budget has been diminishing, and the proposed 46% cut in the budget means there will be approximately 20 people on the staff, and those 20 people are not going to be able to fulfil the requirement for statutory duties. We talked a lot about vulnerable people, adult people. Northamptonshire is getting old, very old peoples live here. And I think what Trading Standards, one of the things that they do is protect these young people. The rogue traders around the county are being caught and nibbled by Trading Standards by not having enough people to tackle these people. We'll give them a free hand. Also, the younger people, underage articles being sold, there'll be no policing, nothing will be done, they'll be targeted by all those unscrupulous traders. The genuine traders will suffer, there will be no safe environment at all in the county.
Shashya, thank you very much. You wanted to say another word. Sandra Mould?
Oh, yeah, I was just, it was just an observation, really, that obviously, we've talked a lot about wanting to protect vulnerable adults and vulnerable children. And just to be very stereotypical, the cuts that we've talked about are to buses, to libraries and to children's centres. And I'm struggling to see who the people affected are going to be if they're not the vulnerable adults and children.
Heather Smith, where does this go now? All of this?
Well, you know, I think I have to go back to the fact that the, it's the costs of those childrens and adults who are already in the system, those with severe learning difficulties, very vulnerable children. It's the costs of looking after those that are absorbing so much of the money. Now, you know, I absolutely agree that to do as much as we can on early help, and it's a national situation, that government has been told that county councils are all facing this huge reduction in funding that has happened over the last few years. And that has meant that the services that have been stopped or, you know, money going into them has been reduced. It's not just in Northamptonshire, it's all over the country. And this has been made very clear to government.
And as an elected representative, you're obviously conscious that at elections, the people listening to this, the people in this room can vote, can decide on your actions now?
Oh, absolutely.
Are you concerned about the future personally?
For me personally, I don't like being in this situation.